Apologies, we were in another meeting that ran a touch late. So just a few minutes to get ourselves together. Lisa, public comment. One virtual, one virtual, that's it, okay. Virtual on the present. Uh, yes, can we get sir?
Yeah, Rajiv is out.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Everybody, we'll call to order the January 27th, 2025 regular meeting of the Newton School Committee. We will start tonight as we do every night with one of our students, leading the pledge of allegiance back by popular demand. We have Lua Thorndyke of Pierce, who I described last week as one of my favorite kids in NPS and I've known her for a long time. But she just told me she's rooting for the Chiefs and so I'm not sure where that leaves us, Lua. We have a lot-
Stay strong, Lua, stay strong.
We have a lot to talk about. That said, if there's no obligation to participate, but for anyone who is willing and able, please ride. And Lua, it's all yours.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, Lua, much appreciated and go Birds.
Or Chiefs.
She's unflappable.
We'll, we'll talk, we'll talk later, Lua. All right, um, we have uh, two folks for public comment this evening. We have one in the room and one virtual. At least I don't have the name of our virtual speaker. Mike Jolly, okay, great. So Stephen, uh, if you could tee up, uh, Mike Jolly. We'll start in the room with Enrique Rosero. Please, uh, state your name and address to start. You have three minutes to present a public comment and I will give you a 30 second warning at two and a half minutes. After which time the Eagles Fight Song will play and no one wants to be subject to that, especially Lua. So, all right, uh, the floor is yours from Rosero.
My name is Enrique Rosero on 19 Garland Street in Newton, Massachusetts. I just wanted to issue a very brief, uh, public comment commending you on the rollout of the Yonder Pouch Program. My middle schooler came today, she told me it's a very bad idea, there was very failed attempts to jailbreak the devices. But nonetheless, I think it deserves praise that you have gone through this. It takes a lot of effort from the educators, administrators and everyone to get the kids into this new tradition. But I think in the long run, it's worth it and I wanted to appreciate your hard work on doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next presenter, uh, is virtual, uh, Mike Jolly. Are you there, Mike? Oh, there you are.
Yep, hi.
So you have, uh, three minutes, uh, if you could state your name and address to start, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So my name is Mike Jolly and I live at 107 Hobart Road in Newton. I'm the parent of two children at John Ward Elementary and I also serve on the Ward After School Board of Directors. Like thousands of other Newton families, my family has benefited tremendously from our high quality after school programs. I'm here to discuss the committee's recent decision to increase building rental fees by 25%. A change that impacts more than a dozen after school programs that have long been vital resources for Newton families. While periodic fee adjustments are both reasonable and expected, a 25% increase in a single year creates significant challenges. This substantial jump suggests an underestimation of these programs' essential role in our community. The ripple effects are serious. Programs may have to consider reducing staff, limiting services, or reducing financial aid for families already navigating economic pressures. What concerns me the most is that this decision was made without consulting the program directors, who could have provided valuable insight into its impact. A collaborative dialogue could have led to creative solutions, such as gradual implementation that would have protected the program's budgets as well as the budgets of families involved. I respectfully urge the committee to reconsider both the size and the timeline of this increase. Let's work together to find an approach that addresses the district's needs while preserving the accessibility and quality of our after school programs. These programs are more than just building tenants. They are essential partners in supporting Newton's families and enriching our children's lives. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jolly. And, uh, I failed to mention beforehand that, you know, folks should not expect a reply from us in real time, but the, the committee does appreciate and take seriously all the, uh, all the comments we receive. All right, let's move to the consent agenda. There's no superintendent update on the agenda.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda of which we have three items. We have a field trip memo, a grant memo, and we have, uh, the minutes of our January 13th meeting. Is there anything a member would like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing nothing, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Moved by Paul, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, moved by Paul, second by Anping. And let's take a vote on that. Um, we're gonna go. You, Rajiv, uh, ward six?
Yes.
Ward three.
Sorry.
Yes.
Ward four.
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward five.
Yes.
Mayor Fuller.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Forgot what word you were for a second. Okay, that passes 7-0. Thank you very much. All right, and we will move to our, uh, three action items for this evening. The first of which is a discussion, uh, update on our alumni interviews from Dr. Nolan.
Good evening, everyone. Um, we figured competency determination was and district goals were going to be a long discussion, so we limited the superintendent update, uh, as the district goals is the comprehensive update, uh, that we can give right now. Relative to the alumni memo, this is actually not an, an item for your approval or action at all. It's just a, a good news channel kind of piece of information. Uh, so it may be interesting for folks to know that back in 2012, um, both North and South undertook a service to, um, unearth all of the alumni that were available, um, through a service that created a hard copy book, uh, that people would buy, that would have people's email addresses and, um, which actually there weren't that many email addresses, but more of their hard addresses. The Newton North community, um, the alumni community through, uh, grants and help from NSF have kept that database up to date over the years. Newton South has not. And so, uh, we started to dip our toe into the alumni development, scene by having a first ever alumni breakfast the half day before Thanksgiving. And we wanted to test the effectiveness and reach of our current, um, tools and our current database to find students who would respond. That was mixed at best and so we learned that we indeed needed to hire another service to, um, execute the development, research. These are free services to us and they, uh, create a PR package and they, um, create a text and a digital file now of all of their research. The problem is, is that it takes six months. So we started that, um, in the fall when we were planning our first alumni, um, events. And so somewhere this spring, we're hoping that that information is going to become available to us. At that time, I asked, um, Lisa to put in, uh, the folder for you, just a sample of what the mailings will be that will go out to then receive information from everyone and keep a comprehensive, up to date database. So that's the backdrop. So then the first, um, the first, uh, meeting on the half day, just as in two other districts when I've done this work was, um, attended, but not well attended when you think of the thousands of folks that might be, um, graduates. So one of the members on the committee asked, or expressed concern, just saying that my, um, my memo said there were waves of alumni and in true indeed, I should have been clearer, there were each hour, new waves of alumni came in. There were about 40 people total at, that came to that event. And then I've interviewed two other groups of six individuals outside of that, who have purported to me that they in turn run alumni pages and Facebook groups and reunion groups that they're sort of the, the class reps for those groups. So, on that day, um, one of the, uh, school committee members asked who were represented in terms of what years of graduate. We had people from, who graduated in the 60s, the 70s, the 80s, the 90s. And then we had more students, probably one or two from each year from 2000 to 215, give or less, one or, one or two from each. And then 21 to 25, there was a group of friends who came together, um, to have breakfast and to talk. So there was a, a wide range of generational spread. Certainly, any first attempt at these items, because they're not annualized, is going to be less well attended than our future pieces. But we did interview them extensively and it's hard to give a deep dive interview to a group greater than 40. So that was the purpose of that and the summary of the memo that's there is just that, those individuals, um, sharing their observations. Subsequently, we had a, uh, meeting with the, um, early 2000s group, um, uh, folks in that group who asked if they could start to work on, uh, what they believe is from their class graduation groups and one of them was the class president and, you know, another was the treasurer, that they really would like to start putting, um, sort of young professional networking groups together based on the alumni that we currently have. And so we did indeed form a Facebook page and an Instagram page and those gentlemen are going to work, um, to start and publish, uh, the first few new events this year, social events. In addition to a fall event, um, which will be a football game, North versus South in September of next year. So those are the things that are currently planned and we just wanted to let you know that, you know, while this is not like our core mission every day, it's important for us to continue to cultivate and learn from our graduates and we had, were fresh off the portrait of a learner process and asked them about that extensively. So this is just an FYI, I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Thank you. Is there questions from members? I don't see any, so, um, I think we can move on. I would just say, I think it's, uh, it's great that we're, we're going about this and, you know, probably long overdue for NPS to, um, keep that kind of connection. I know a bunch of us have talked multiple times about, wouldn't it be great to have, you know, continuing data from beyond, uh, high school years and, and, you know, see how well we prepared kids for the next, uh, next step in their lives. So this is a, a good first step in that, um, in that direction. Uh, next item is, uh, superintendent and district mid-year goals.
Okay, so, uh, we had a few requests from, um, from, uh, our members, um, one request, and I don't know if Casey No Miller is online, but asking for details about parental training on the new IEP process. So even if she's not there, I can get that information to you. Um, I know that we've partnered with, um, with CPAC to think about how to best do that. Um, so I'll just wait a second to see if she's, if she's there. There was a request for updated MTSS implementation resources to be tagged in the upcoming budget season, so we could see specifically what resources were being used for MTSS. And I think that was a, a really good suggestion. There was a request for a staff retention report, which if you recall, we did present in the fall, um, with HR, so I'll re-forward that to all of the members. Those, that was the full, um, set of requests on district goals that I received in advance of the meeting, so I'm happy to answer any other questions and just by way of, um, updating the public. So we have one year bridge goals, um, in place right now. And each of the departments has updated, um, with a color code, what level of completion the district goals are at, at this point, with artifacts if they're completed at this time. So people can actually click and see the artifacts of completion. So where today is literally the 90th day of school, so it is, we are 50% um, through the school year. So what you're seeing there, um, reflects that there's still half of the year left to go, um, for data collection and for, um, execution of the goals. I do see Casey online. Casey, the question is, what, what's been happening with parents to train them on the new IEP process and the new IEP?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so we have had both in-person and remote training sessions, um, with parents. We've also met with, we meet with CPAC monthly and so they've been giving us feedback, which has been helpful also in that process. Um, I guess I should say that if we have not reached everybody who wants the training, we're happy to do more. So, um, certainly reach out to me via email, um, or phone number, it's on our website, uh, and we can definitely look to scheduling some more opportunities.
Casey, what does it look like in an IEP meeting if a parent rolls in and they haven't had any exposure to the new IEP? What, what happens to orient them there?
Yeah, great question. So our, um, team specialists, so these are the folks who facilitate IEP team meetings, um, have all been trained, um, along with our staff too. And so parents should absolutely feel comfortable asking, um, questions and sort of slowing down the meeting and asking about the new structures if things look, um, unfamiliar.
Fantastic.
Okay, other questions for Dr. Nolan on the, uh, mid-year update on district goals? Yes, Paul.
Not a question, just a comment, but it was a very thorough and thoughtful presentation that answered the questions I would have come up with. So, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions on that item, we-
You think you know a board.
Yeah, I know. This is, I don't know where I am right now. We'll move on to, uh, what I assume will be the main event of the evening, which is a review of the competency determination and graduation requirements. Do you want to dive right in? Do you want me to sort of frame this or?
I can or you can, totally up to you. Just for the general public at large, um, so most, um, folks are aware that there was a ballot initiative in the state, um, in order to, um, bless you, stop MCAS as a graduation requirement in the state of Massachusetts. That ballot initiative was successful, um, but what, uh, sometimes is a little known fact is that that does not eliminate MCAS from the lives of our students and our staff. MCAS is required at the moment under federal accountability expectations for the state of Massachusetts. And MCAS will continue to be offered for all of our students, grades three through 10. What is different now is that it will not be used as a part of a graduation or a competency determination that might prohibit a student from graduating from high school and receiving a diploma. So, under the current state, um, regulations in Massachusetts, a student must pass graduation requirements and then there is something called a competency determination. That competency determination used to be fulfilled by taking MCAS. With the ballot initiative that recently passed, MCAS is no longer an option for that. So now states must come up with their, I mean, sorry, states.
Districts.
Districts must come up with their own competency determination, uh, expectations, definitions for how we will, um, review our students and make sure that they are deemed competent in the standards, um, put forth by the Massachusetts frameworks and the skills in the common core. So of course, that puts the state in quite an interesting position because there are hundreds of districts and there are hundreds of conversations going on right now about this. I just want us to keep our eyes on who we're serving right now though, which is our high school students, in particular, our high school students in grade 12, who may have not passed the MCAS yet. Uh, they are eagerly awaiting us to make a decision about what that competency determination will be, so they can rearrange their course schedules right now and get that done right now. Now, it's a very small number of students in the Newton Public Schools. But we are also talking about students in 11th grade who may not have passed and they are choosing their courses right now for next year. So there is some urgency here. And as I told you, we as superintendents feel a little bit spun around as I conveyed in this memo in that, since this vote, the governor has said she's going to have a graduation committee for the state, which may have bearing on some of the decisions we make here. And then just last week, our, our, um, acting commissioner at the Department of Education said that DESI may have some additional requirements and may want to indeed review and approve whatever comes out of districts. Uh, that's a tall order to get done quickly, um, but I think we need to do our part and determine, uh, how we want to proceed here. I also just want to caution the public, we're only going to talk about this year right now because if the governor comes out in 18 months or sooner, or DESI with new standards, we will have talked ourselves into something about next year that we may need to untalk ourselves out of. When this was initially proposed, after the MCAS was eliminated as a, as a competency requirement, I was thinking very big and visionary, thinking, you know, is this a place for our portrait of a learner standards? Is this a place where we could really do something dynamic and groundbreaking? But since then, uh, the conversations, I think we have to wait and see on sort of the longer range vision. But I hope you'll join me in that exciting vision of the future for our graduates and when determining them competent. But we have to make very quickly some decisions about this year's students. Um, so my proposal in the memo said that we would learn about all the competency expectations tonight with the idea that we would vote it at our next meeting. I don't know if, uh, the Board of Ed is gonna vote sooner rather than later on that. So we have not been told that, that definition, although I can certainly check the agenda for the Board of Education. So that's where we stand and we as an administrative team, so not me, but the Assistant Soup for Secondary Education, both high school principals and the vice principals have put forward to you a draft that is, that is here. Uh, we don't even have to talk about the draft today if we just want to build understanding about competency. But by next week, by, by our next meeting, we really need to take some action so we can help our, our students, um, meet the, meet the marks we need them to meet, to be deemed competent. I do want to say that one of the trickiest part, uh, parts of this situation is that students who have left the Newton Public Schools, and this is true for any public school district, who did not receive a competency determination, i.e. a diploma in a prior year, even if they have left us, we have to allow them to come back and review their transcript and see if they could be deterred, deemed competent under our new standards and give them the opportunity to do that. And we don't know the scope of that right now. It's not as large as some other districts, but it, it may be large in that we've been doing MCAS for a long, long time. And we don't know who has been, who has been denied those, um, those diplomas, without doing some, a lot of extensive research. That said, some individuals may not want to, um, petition and go into that process. So we will have this, uh, process we'll need to undergo. I've proposed a committee to do that work here so that we can have a fair and equitable process. So it's, it's a complicated time, um, but we are really looking to serve our 12th graders right now, who graduate in June.
Okay, thank you. Um, so what I would like is for us to focus initially in this discussion on, um, kind of that bigger picture question before we start getting into the weeds of exactly what, you know, how we're gonna execute on this. As I, you know, as I see it, there's kind of two broad paths we can go. One is the more, um, let's call it the more active and, uh, you know, put a marker out as to what we believe this should look like, whether it's this year or next year or the year after. And, you know, do that with, without the, the state's input. I think the second path, broadly speaking, is to take a more passive wait and see approach. You know, I, I have a preference for one of those two paths, but, uh, I'll, I'll open it up to the committee first. And, uh, feel free to disagree with that assertion, of course. Uh, I do think we also need to, as, as we're having this sort of bigger picture discussion, excuse me, as Dr. Nolan alluded to, there's, there's a difference between kids who have been in the system as it exists for the last 11 or 12 years and have lived in the regime where you had to pass MCAS and that was it. That was the, that was the marker. I think we do have the ability to think differently about those kids than how we might think about this in the future going forward where you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a larger funnel and we have, uh, a, a different ability to, to manage that. And we wouldn't be, uh, uh, outkicking our coverage, so to speak, to use a, uh, football analogy. Go Birds. Um, so with that, uh, any, uh, comments, thoughts from the members? Mayor Fuller.
And this may be violating exactly what you suggested we not talk about. And I apologize. Um, I think, um, Anna and her team did bring forward a thoughtful way forward for the next four to eight weeks, uh, given all the time pressure, uh, facing our 12th graders who have not passed the MCAS. And I suspect that is a relatively small number, but I, I didn't I had a technical question. Um, one way forward is to certify competency by saying you've got full credits for at least two years of English, full, full credits for two years of math, full credits in at least one lab science. Credits are earned if you have passed the course or tell me what it means to earn and what is fail? What does fail, fail? When, when do you not earn a credit?
You fail.
If you could just describe-
Failing a course means you do not receive credit for it. So that's a D, uh, an F.
It's a D means you've, you've passed.
Minus, yeah.
You have.
Well, so this is one of the, this is one of the things that, that systems are grappling with, right? So when you say the words mastery of the skills of the courses, you know, that you can imagine, like, you're gonna see some districts say Cs, some districts say, have said Ds, some say just passing. So the way I feel and the way the team here feels that if we're going to certify these courses as having taught the standards, then if you're getting credit for the class, we're confident that you have at least a baseline understanding of those. Mastery is something that we're gonna have to define for the whole system in the future. It is the crux of this. It is, it is why we were worried about the ballot initiative because this to me is a higher standard than MCAS. Then people could disagree with that.
So where did you put Ds? Or, or have you figured out what you're gonna recommend if somebody got a D in a class?
If they receive credit for the class, which means they pass it, they, in any shape or form, they're, for this year, they're going to receive credit.
And a D is a passing grade in Newton. Thank you. That's what I was trying to understand as we move forward.
Okay, uh, Anping and then Barry.
I think this is a very important topic and, um, currently, you know, based on the committee feedback and also based on the, uh, alumni, the, uh, their feedback seems the, they would all like to, uh, have the, uh, academic standards or high standards or academic rigor. And also I understand, uh, during that, uh, last year, the, uh, ballot, uh, votes and the more over 60% of Newton residents support to keep this, uh, CD requirement, uh, even though state, uh, was otherwise. So in that sense, I think, uh, this is a strong message we send to the community. So not only technically of CD requirement or it's part of the graduation requirement, but also a strong message. And, uh, you know, uh, we are also doing the, uh, the profile of learner that could be part of it. And people could discuss, hey, what kind of learner we want to have? And graduate requirement is certainly a part of it, a very significant part of it. is certainly a part of it, a very significant part of it, not only for the county seniors. I'm thinking about middle school students, even elementary school students that want to get school, get our Newton District Diploma. Hey, these are requirements. So in that sense, the symbolic meaning probably more important than the legal technical definition of CD requirement. Takes some time. And now it's a technical question. We could still use the MCAS CD requirement as part of our school graduating requirement, right?
That's correct. The MCAS would not be part of the CD requirement. It would become a graduation requirement. Some districts are doing that.
So in that sense, almost you do not make any changes, just becomes local?
Correct. You could do that.
Okay. You know, that, by the way, that's a very minimum requirement. And I understand some special needs students and students with learning disabilities probably have a little bit challenges. But we have to think about, as I mentioned, the symbolic meaning to the committee, what Newton is stand for, and we need to have a, you know, a robust discussion to see what's committee's feedback to help us, to guide us to develop this new district CD and standards. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, there are four districts in Metro West who have proposed that MCAS become a requirement. It's in draft form. It's been before their committees. So and remember, when I say Metro West, I say between Newton and Worcester on that swath. We were at Tri-County Superintendents last week and four districts have proposed that as a graduation requirement, not a competency determination.
Yeah, and just just to make that point clear, there is a difference between a local graduation requirement and a competency determination. You may use MCAS solely as a local graduation requirement. You may not use MCAS as a competency determination, correct?
So correct. And if I may, one member asked that question, saying, what happens to a current 11th grader who took the test last year but didn't pass MCAS? Do they take it again or is there some new requirement? So everyone will still have to take MCAS because of the state accountability expectation. Grade 11 in the future of MCAS depends on what we decide. If we allow MCAS to be part of our graduation requirements, then yes, that person would take it. If not, then no. It will not count as a CD. They must achieve mastery of standards in whatever way we decide. That said, it's unclear to us the future of retakes and all of that piece from DESI since they will no longer shoulder that scenario. So if they don't offer retakes, we may not be able to make it a graduation requirement if it is not allowed past grade 10. So I just want to level set everyone's expectations that that may not be the way to go. That said, when people are proposing this so far, I'll read you one district's way of getting around this. They say that graduation requirements in X city will be listing all the courses, earning 92 credits in that course of study. Three, participate in and achieve passing scores on the state MCAS test in math, English, language, and science. The principal may, however, accept demonstrations of alternative performance with an appeal process. And then four, complete the state mandated competency requirements, which in our district consists of blank, 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 listing them just as we have. So so that's, those are some ways that people are addressing this.
Okay. Thank you. Barry?
All right, a couple of questions. So on the on the scale of the scores for MCAS, it's what 560 is the top? And then passing is is it 460? Do, is there any way to determine like what the grade equivalent of that is?
I wish.
Yeah.
Yeah. Grades are a very subjective measure in any place, and so there is no correlation for grades.
Does does DESI offer any guidance as to how they landed on those scores?
No, not not related to grading.
Okay.
I mean, we know the research behind why they scale it the way they scale it.
Is there any information about how they plan to maintain MCAS in the future? I assume that it would be different. It's they're going to maintain that that test and and the administration of it differently as it not a state requirements anymore. And will it be funded less? Will, I mean, is this all going to come out?
Yeah, I mean, they have not said that they have to, for state accountability reasons, run the test. So the question is, like, what what other?
Quality of the test go down potentially?
I have no idea.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if we're going to put time and effort into it, it better be good.
Okay. That?
Great question though.
Okay. Paul?
Thanks. Thank you, Anna, for the summary. Couple, couple points. I'm glad you distinguished between what you need to do right now and what we might do in the future. DESI board meets tomorrow. They're not going to vote on this tomorrow. They don't have a proposal yet from their acting commissioner or whatever interim commissioner. So the earliest they could vote on it is at their February meeting, which is, I think, the third Tuesday in February. So if we vote on something at our early February meeting, there's a chance that it could conflict with what they come up with a few, couple of weeks later, but frankly, I doubt it the way you've worded it here. It seems to me virtually impossible that it would be inconsistent with whatever they come up with because as they look statewide, I'm guessing, I don't say this out of any personal knowledge of what they might decide, but I'm guessing that they're going to, they have to do a lowest common denominator approach for the state as a whole so that the majority of 300 and something districts can get it done likewise for you for for this year. I also think it's highly unlikely that they would engage in an extensive approval and auditing process. Again, just because logistically that would be possible for this year. Maybe they'll do that for the future, maybe they won't. So just putting that aside, to Chris's point, and I think on Ping, this is the point you were making too. I believe if if we were to look at expectations of our constituents in Newton, that the last thing they would want us to adopt is a lowest common denominator approach to this. There are greater expectations for our school system than that. And as Chris was suggesting, there's an opportunity here for leadership on the part of Newton Public Schools to reflect that community sentiment in and of itself, the value that we would get from doing that, but also to set a marker for the state as a whole and for DESI to understand that we want to go that way. And as On Ping was suggesting, and I think Anna, you were suggesting also, the profile of the graduate approach that we're going through right now and other things that you're working on can help inform what that is to be. It's also unlikely, you were talking about the disparity in grading across districts. Frankly, within our own system, we have a huge disparity in grading as to what a B means in any given class, even between the two high schools and probably within the high schools. So Mayor Fuller, your question about what is mastery? Is it A, B, C, or D is is a key question that I think we need to resolve, which again goes back to Dr. Nolan's whole approach with regard to standardized curriculum, pedagogy, assessment, all those things that she's trying to put in place. But I for one would like you to consider whether when DESI does issue their proposed regulations, we want to make an explicit comment to that agency. If they don't include this provision in in their proposed regulations, that any community can exceed their, the metrics and the approach they have indicated. And also that prior approval of doing that should not be required of DESI. That that a certification by the superintendent upon a vote of the school committee as to the approach we've adopted should suffice in in the first case as being sufficient for DESI's purpose. Now, if they want to audit some systems after the fact, fine. But I think we need to make it clear that it would be impractical and counterproductive for them to try to engage in a preapproval process across 300-plus districts. I mean, how can they even measure, you know, or describe what algebra is in Newton compared in in a third level course compared to the same course even just across the border in Weston or Wellesley or Watertown? That kind of analysis by DESI is going to be impossible to do. We have a hard enough time just doing it within a district. So I'd like to urge you to, if you feel comfortable with that and if our committee feels comfortable with that, for you to make those points when DESI promulgates their proposed regulations whenever they do. Thank you, Chris.
Good. Thanks, Paul.
I just want to say the only experience I have that's parallel to this is back when more accountability measures came in and district determined assessment measures, DDMs, were executed by DESI and they were required to be reviewed by DESI. This seemed like a nice idea that every every district would identify, just as we are now, their standards for growth. How will you measure growth? And it was an absolute nightmare that took up three years of my life only to have it be abandoned because most districts could not make it work. And, you know, we learned a ton about assessment. We created growth assessments. We could track every child's everything. But it was impossible for DESI to actually get parallel data from the districts for this very reason. So I just want to, I hearken that memory to all DESI folks listening that 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 was like a very tough moment in in trying to unify the state, but in in reality could not do it.
Thank you, Paul. Other, Emily?
I apologize for my voice in advance. I hope that you can hear and understand what I'm saying.
We can hear you, Emily.
Excellent. Good. So I just want to bring something up because I've had multiple people contacting me in the community asking this question. And I think it's important for us to be very clear that there are still graduation requirements, right? That this does not negate or in any way take away from the graduation requirements that we have for Newton Public Schools. And that the competency determinant is very important and for many reasons, but it is not the whole picture. I think I've got a number of very anxious parents of current students and also of former students saying, you know, I don't understand this. What does this have to do? You know, have we suddenly gotten rid of graduation requirements? And the answer is no, no, we have not gotten rid of graduation requirements and that this is something that is part of graduating, but we still, Newton Public Schools still has in both high school handbooks, very distinct requirements that you need to fulfill in order to graduate. So I just, I think that's important for us to mention. Paul, I understand and I hear what you're saying. I also don't necessarily want to get ahead of ourselves either. You know, I, for me personally, the most important issue at the moment in front of us is how are we going to handle our 2025 graduates? And and I know, Chris, at the beginning of this, you talked about sort of more passive versus like figuring out what the state's going to do first before, you know, we decide to implement anything and yet on the other side, we could just jump in. I've got mixed feelings about that. What I don't want to have happen is have us work hard on something and then finding out that the state is going in a totally different direction and it negates the work that we're doing. But I am very interested to see where we end up with all of this work. So thank you.
Do want to just thank you, Emily, for mentioning that. I just want to say, like, everyone's in a tailspin about this. So I can be in the Tri-County Roundtable. So three counties worth of superintendents. Last week, we met at Keith Technical High School. There were literally 50 different flavors of proposals on this topic and 50 different sets of concerns. And so I just want to say to you that everyone is reflecting what Emily just said, which is, you know, we want to do this expeditiously for our kids on the line right now and we are totally nervous about what the future expectations are going to be. And we feel like we have to hurry up, but we really don't want to because we know that there could be additional regulations coming.
Other thoughts? Paul, go ahead.
Just want to clarify for, in response to Emily, that I'm not suggesting that right now we would come up with the full-fledged determination for the future. What I'm suggesting is that in the rulemaking that the state agency holds, if we find provisions in that that we think could limit what we might want to do in the future or that would engage us in an overly bureaucratic and unproductive process, that we speak out in those sessions. But Emily, I agree with you totally that until the regulations are done, it would be fruitless to design our future broader version. So I think we're on the same wavelength there. Thank you.
Well, Roundtable presidents are seated at the table for feedback for these sessions, so I'll directly be able to convey that.
Yeah, and Paul, to that point, I think, I mean, as as I read the language of the statute, it, as it exists, reads very much like a floor, not a ceiling, to what we can do based on, on, you know, a couple of things people have mentioned. Most specifically, what does mastery mean and what does satisfactory completion mean? Those are undefined terms and as far as the statute is concerned, seem wide open for us to interpret however we choose to interpret. So, you know, that's lever one that the the district seems to have to be able to to make a determination that's in the best interest of Newton. The other piece is that final last sentence fragment at the end of of what Anna clipped in her memo of something to the effect of any other criteria that the board shall determine. Well, that inherently is a, we can't do less than everything proceeded that said, but we can certainly do more. And I would think that would, you know, speak to both breadth and depth of, you know, what subject matter, what depth of that subject matter. It seems like it's fairly wide open at present. You know, I would kind of, you know, On Ping pointed this out, you know, Newton did not vote in favor of removing MCAS as a graduation requirement. I think that's something relevant for us to think about. And I think just in general, like, this is, this is, you know, if I'm being very off-brand and optimistic, like, this is an opportunity for us to to do something here and to, you know, to show leadership and to to put a marker out there of, you know, this is, you know, this is what we think is in the best interest of Newton irrespective of what minimum requirements the state may put out there.
I'd like to think my sunshine is rubbing off on you.
One other point?
Go ahead.
Anna, you talked about going back for the previous non-graduates.
Yep.
Who didn't pass MCAS. I think once you dive into the numbers, you're going to find very small numbers. And and so, again, I would urge you to think about our own internal bureaucratic flexibility and not spending a lot of time and effort on working on a problem that may not amount to much.
I think if I might just illuminate for the committee, it's it's probably not who we all think it is who's not passing. So I just want to say that one of the huge assets of our community is that there are folks from all over the world that come here, come and go. It's an asset and it's It's an asset and it's a difficulty at times. But I do want to say to you that a newcomer in English who comes in in grade eleven that we have to certify can master English language arts at the 10th grade level, when they may come into us at a third grade level. This is, this is the rub for us. Or if we are truly going to live the spirit of multiple pathways for all different types of learners, we have learners who may not be able to take the M C A S but who may be able to demonstrate course competency, but not through traditional assessment measures. So we really have to kick the doors off what was done to us as young people and that nostalgia of that this is what rigor is when we, and we have to create those alternative pathways for different types of learners. Do not mistake me saying that we reduce our standards. But there are many pathways and even the work world shows us that in these days. So I just want to say that, that, you know, we have some huge challenges to overcome with this, especially given our English language learner population and some of our special needs population. But I know that we can figure it out. So that's, that's the pledge is we don't want to have some of our learners on the margins, if you will, the non-dominant learners not able to achieve these without significant changes to their program. So it's, it's a lot to consider.
Tamika, you haven't spoken yet. So Barry, I'm going to allow Tamika and then you and then Onping.
So this has been a really good conversation. I'm glad we're having it and I've listened very intently to everyone's comments. I think for me, Anna, the last thing you said really illustrates and highlights the level of care and attention that you and your team are entrusted to do this. Right. D E S I and, well, not D E S I. Our statewide voters have thrown us into a tailspin. And the way that you are pivoting with the care and attention as the educational leader of this district, upholding implicitly our high standards, quality standards, but doing so in an equitable manner and thinking through all of the different pathways of folks being able to attain mastery and show competence. I have every confidence in you folks to do a really thorough and excellent job. And for us, and Paul, as you said, to maintain our own high standards in, as we think of the next phase of this. But for us to have that, that really targeted approach for these class of 2025 students, I think, again, that was the right way to go. It's the necessary way to go and I trust implicitly what you've put forward. That's it.
Thanks, Tamika, Barry, and then Onping.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really liked your last statement too about just other, other options to show mastery of skills other than the M C A S. And I hadn't thought about the thought that removing M C A S then opens the door for the opportunity to show their competency in a different way that others don't. I often, and you brought up the, let not, let's not stand on our own experiences. And I often think the world that I did not have to take the M C A S to graduate because it would have been a massive challenge for me. But when I think about, well, if I had another way of showing my skillset, I would have killed it. So I love the opportunity that this presents and then gives us the opportunity as a district to let all types of learners shine in that moment that they're proving what these many years in Newton meant to them.
Thanks, Barry. Onping.
Thanks. So we all understand this. The M C A S C D requirement is only part of the high school graduation. Each district has its own graduation requirements. And here we have a list of the credit hours they have to have. I'm just curious, Anna, do you happen to have a rough number? How many students, high school students who cannot meet the local requirements? Even though they could have passed it.
So very few, it's usually the reverse, Onping. It's that students can meet our graduation requirements. They can't pass the test for a variety of reasons. So like testing anxiety or illness or, I mean, there could be a variety of reasons they don't pass. So there's, there's almost no students who can't do both. So it's usually one or the other. And it's usually the M C A S test that is the sticking point. And it is usually students for whom English is not their first language and they come to us late in their career.
I see. Did you say that to pass any coursework to earn the credits? You got D? That's good enough?
Well, that's where we are today.
Well, of course, I remember my son got a, once got a D from the A P physics. He was taking course for fun and, you know, because his friends were in class, hey, come here. But D to many friends, probably. So anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Onping. Do we want to discuss at all at tonight, the 2025? How we're going to handle that for, you know, what is the immediate need here? Or would folks rather take, take what we discussed, digest that a bit and then, and have picked that up at our, our next meeting? Barry, go ahead.
I did one good question and not to put you on the spot. Does the only student in the room have any thoughts on this?
I haven't taken the like 10th grade M C A S myself. So I don't have like a good sense of difficulty and like what the range of difficulty is.
It's exactly like your eighth grade one.
I know no one enjoys it, but I think we do have to take it anyway. So I think if there's, for like a student's perspective, I, from what I know, there wouldn't be too much of a change because like you said, there's like very few students that this really applies to. So I'm not entirely sure about that.
It's a handful of students. Let me, if I may, put a few other morsels before you just to contemplate. So one of the districts at our roundtable meeting, so I wrote down what every single district is doing. And like some of the districts were like, we're just going to wait and do nothing and have D E S I come to us. And I'm not comfortable with that approach. Some were putting M C A S in as a requirement and then just certifying courses as we are. But some were enacting things like attendance requirements and credit hour requirements. And you should know that at our high schools, we do take attendance for credit purposes each period, which is insurmountable in some schools, but we do it. And, you know, we have been talking a lot about time on learning and things of that nature. It's just something to consider. Of course, it brings up a lot of other considerations around time on learning and number of classes held or canceled and things like that. So I, I say that because you're going to ask me for a summary of what other towns are doing and that's on there. So I gave you a smattering last week of, of people who provided their policies. And then I can give you a summary of what the tri-county soups said. But that was one kind of compelling piece. We are extensively quizzing all of the other cities and towns that look like us in terms of E L L competencies and trying to see if there are any more forward-looking practices that we can put into place for course trajectories for our E L L students, which quite honestly is aligned with the vision the director of E L L, Alison Levitt, gave me the minute I got here. So I think she's been very visionary and has been slowly pushing that. So I've asked her for this budget season, if we are to make those types of accommodations and changes to E L L programming right now, what would the, what would the impact to the budget be? And what would that, what would the correction need to be right away? So we'll bring that to you in the budget season. I don't have that. This is like last week, our first time talking about that. So, so just, I just wanted you to chew on a couple of those ideas that came from those, our statewide meetings.
And just to be clear, when you're talking about things like attendance and the like, that's, other districts are, are looking at implementing that in the immediate term, not as the bigger picture down the road?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, I think they're really concerned about students coming to school at all, some of those districts. So just, just something to consider.
Okay. Tamika, then Paul.
So on that last note, for us, attendance does factor into the students' grades that they receive. So in that way, kind of already is embedded.
Right. They get an N if they don't meet the criteria for attendance.
Okay.
Do you want to tell people how that works? Do you know?
If you get an N, you don't receive credit or like they take off some part of the credit. I think that's how it works. I'm not sure if it affects the grade you received for the class other than missed coursework.
But you wouldn't get that credit earned?
I think so, yeah. I'm not sure if it's all credit that you don't earn or if it's, but I think there's some sort of credit taken away.
What does it, what does it take to get an N?
Well, let me look it up for you.
Excused, absent, and two unexcused. And it's per terms or like quarter.
Per quarter?
Yeah.
Okay. I was going to say that. Paul?
That was my first question. Thank you. Just so we know what's coming is, are we hoping for a vote on February 10th?
Well, I would like to because I need to tell these young people something. Yeah.
So this, this is like our first reading.
Correct. Correct. Yep.
I'm very comfortable with it.
And we're still workshopping. Like there were a couple weekend conversations where I said, everyone needs to stop because I have to give this to the school committee. But some more clarity, things for clarity. And I just want to give a shout out to Amy Winston at North and Jason Williams at South, the vice principals, who've just been so caring and focused on a good solution. They were really the muscle behind the draft right away. So I just want to say, say thank you to them.
But in light of Tamika's question and the answer, it seems to me we don't have to have a separate attendance thing because that gets rolled into the grade ending. But would we just, again, details, would, do we vote this as a policy?
Yes. It will be written into I D K, which I've submitted for your, our current I D K is in your hands right now.
Right.
It's online, it's highlighted in yellow, the portion that at a minimum needs to come out and you'll see in my memo. You can, you can do this in two ways. You can vote to remove that line from the policy because it says M C A S is the standard and just leave it as I D K without that. And then you can enact the competency determination in small p through the handbooks of the high school, which you must approve. Or you can enshrine it in big P policy in I D K. That looks like what most districts are doing. Since you've been tasked with the responsibility, you put it in the big P.
Yeah, I think that's right.
And I might have confused myself here a little bit because I know there was a slight change made to the memo is, is the, is the active one, the one that says current members of the N P S class of 2025? Or the one that says transition, current members of the N P S class of 2025 and class of 2026?
Says transition.
Okay. I was working off the wrong one.
Well, the only thing that changed either way is just flip it to the second page. And we added, because while people pass the M C A S, so some children have already passed it in 10th grade, we still have to certify them. And there was some confusion even among us, like, so I had, we had to list, like you either completed the M C A S and passed it at the time when it was offered. So that's all the way up to November of this year, retests were offered. So anybody who passed, that's it. You're done. We will certify you as competent. And then anyone else will be the course review that is noted and proposed here. So those are, that was, we had to get to that on our own. And that was confusing even coming from D E S I.
Okay, so. Sorry, can I ask one more clarifying question there? Just, so.
So it's, it's the one that does not say 2026. It says transition, current members of the class of 2025.
So this is the one that says local certification of competency for the class of 2025 is completion of the M C A S as it had existed before? Or these and or, but I mean, and isn't really relevant in that sense because you only need one. Or full credits earned in these, these subject matters. Okay, so either one suffices. Then the, the proposal on the table would be that policy I K F, our graduation requirements, doesn't change.
Correct.
And that remains as it is.
But you would add, under students must also earn a competency determination in order to graduate as required by the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. You would then add.
Yeah.
Your competency determination.
I'm sorry, other than, I was talking about the actual criteria, not the, that piece of language. Yeah, okay. So if you, so the, the, the districts who say, are saying that, well, M C A S is going to remain a local graduation requirement, that would end up in policy, whatever the equivalent of the policy I K F is, local graduation requirement.
That's right.
Competency determination, totally different. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Now that I've got that clear, go ahead, Mayor Fuller.
I'm having PTSD. I feel like we're back in the pandemic period with tremendous uncertainty, changing policies, lack of clarity from the state. I suggest we follow the recommendation of the superintendent for the, the students who are already, are a nanosecond from being in February of their senior year. Get through the next couple of months. We'll have some more time to think about students who are graduating in 2026. But let's give some clarity to our current students and their caregivers and family members right now and wait to see what D E S I comes up with and the ideas of your educators throughout the system about what we should be doing in the coming months.
Suggesting just one year.
Yes, I wouldn't, I don't even know if you can do a policy that just gets us through this graduating year is how I would think about it. And it will absolutely need to come back and get, be given more in-depth thought as we learn more and understand better the landscape.
Thank you. Other questions? Do, are, are folks content to sit on this for now and then come back and have a vote at our next meeting on the 2025 requirements?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, would you like high school staff here to be able to ask iteration conversations? I mean, there's really nothing like complicated or sexy about it. It's just like, we need a standard and we'll meet it. We love our high school staff, but no.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective for the 2025 piece, it's, it's kind of what I was talking about before. Like they've lived in this world for 12 years now.
Yep.
And you can't go back and, and, you know, unscramble that egg. So this is.
Well, and the governor indicated that no recommendations would come from the task force for about 18 months in her speech last, two weeks ago. So that might even mean that 2026 would need to be under this guise as well because I certainly don't want to keep yanking 2026 back and forth across a bunch of competing new draft frameworks. So I, seated at that table, I will say, 2026 probably needs to be given the same considerations so that, you know, because they're picking their courses right now for next year. So they're not going to have a lot of wiggle room.
So as someone who probably prefers being a little more active as opposed to passive, I would say, and this is my viewpoint, I think that probably makes sense to clear the decks on 25 and 26 now. Again, we're talking about kids who have been in that regime for 11 or 12 years. I do think though, it's worth giving thought to what comes next because I don't have great confidence that the state will come with something timely, number one, and that what it comes with will be aligned with what folks expect in. in Newton. And I wouldn't want the committee to find itself two years forward going, ah, well, geez, you know what, like, now we're already where we are, so let's just keep rolling forward the same thing and never get to the conversation of this is an opportunity for us. So I, I mean, I personally think it is something we should be thinking about in front of the state. Um, even if some of that ends up being partly wasted effort. I mean, it doesn't seem like it will be given, again, the statute really reads as a floor, not a ceiling.
Well, and I'm about to go to the national superintendent's conference in the spring and it certainly informs the sessions I go to because there are states that are well, well beyond in this um, kind of work for what they have, you know, different types of graduation pathways. Um, so I'll be hunting that out um, to try to see if there are any compelling ideas to bring back here along with strategic planning ideas.
Thanks, Tamika.
Chris, I actually, I do agree with uh, with you with the point you just made. And I think the most nimble way of approaching this might be to roll this conversation into the one Anna, you're having with your staff around uh, aligning the courses and thinking about it as a bundle of Newton graduates of high school, what does it look like and what is required of that? I think that for me would be the most just beneficial way of, of doing this that takes account of all of these various pieces and streamlines them into one uh, one recommendation that comes out.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a great point. I mean, it's, it's um, it's almost fortunate timing in a way that we happen to be going through an assessment of common curriculum and common assessments, which one surely would hope would align with our graduation requirements or we're probably not doing a great job.
And that way we're not duplicating the work.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think that's, to think of it as one big process is uh, is, is probably the right approach. Yeah.
Kind of exciting to think about, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Sunshine?
Excuse me. Uh, okay, so I think we have a plan to move forward on this. We will uh, address 2025 and perhaps 2026 at the, the next meeting. Give the administration the tools they need to uh, be able to execute on uh, on that. Okay, any other questions, thoughts? Okay, well, with that, that covers the agenda for this evening. And at 7:50 PM, we are adjourned.
Who are you tonight?